Was there something specific you needed to hear?
I just wanted her to know that Pauline was wanting to tell her when she left.
Okay, could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. We are one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, it's good to see everybody. The school is, uh, the school season is in full fling. And I hope everybody's enjoying what they're enjoying. Let me turn it over to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, President Dorsey, members of the board. I have a lot of things to share with you tonight, so I did provide you a paper copy. We are in day fifteen. We've had an amazing start to the school year. We kicked off our district leadership team meeting this year down at New Fields. I provided you some handouts of some of the activities that we did there. It was a fantastic day of reflection and connection and really focusing on what we need to do this year around belonging. Opening day was incredible, celebrating our staff, our support staff, our teachers of the year, administrator of the year, our impact person of the year, sharing our joy from last school year. And I think we would all agree that the real inspiration from Dr. Adolf Brown is still with us today. We are continuing our work on college and career readiness. You'll hear from Doug Harder tonight on a update for that. I do want to share with you, we've made some adjustments at the high school around freshmen. We moved our PCC classes to the high school side, so that really limits our freshmen having to go over to Walker Career Center. We're anchoring our class, our counselors and administrators in the freshman cohort going forward. Those folks will become experts on how we need to support our freshmen. And you'll hear us mention this several times tonight and over the next few weeks. Our envisioning event is Tuesday, October 3rd, at the Marriott East Hotel, and this will provide a foundation for our next strategic plan. I have already been visiting schools on the, as well as our cabinet, has been getting out to our schools to feel the energy and make sure our folks have what they need. I was able to visit schools with Brittany to pass out WAVE grants, that was exciting to do right at the beginning of the year. I've visited some of our new teacher classrooms already, which has been great. And I just want to give a shout out to our building facilities and maintenance teams. Our buildings have never looked better. We had our first legislator engagement breakfast last Friday. I will share with you that TBR was a big topic of conversation. There are many school districts and we're still, we feel like we're in a good place. But there are many school districts that don't feel that $151 is going to be sufficient to cover the costs that are needed. We're going to keep an eye on that and continuing our conversations with legislators to see where we are. I want to highlight Allison Woods, along with representatives from Perry, IPS, and Wayne, were asked to meet with Senator Hunley last week. And topics of their conversation included seclusion and restraint, the name change legislation, funding around special education, and the staffing shortages that districts around the state are seeing. My community connections for this past month, I was a part of a Rise Indy panel discussion along with IPS. Since Yvette Glenn is here, I gotta, I gotta give her a shout out for our Warren Family Night at Victory Field last Friday night. It was a great event. I think we had about seventy families and staff show up. And I got to go on the air with Howard Kelman for a half inning, and he gave us a good shout out, so that was a lot of fun. I participated in a food hunger focus meeting just yesterday. I'll share with you that Old Bethel is really struggling with their space. And they're looking for ways to try to find a new location so they can expand their food pantry to serve more families. Right now, they're operating on a three-day schedule and they want to open that up to a five-day schedule. I met with Connie Scott. If you've not met Connie, Connie is our new Warren Branch Manager at the Indianapolis Public Library. Wonderful lady, really doing a great job of getting to know our kids. And really wants to do some great things with our school district, so going to continue that relationship. My typical Rotary and Jane Pauli meetings. And last but not least, I want to share some more enjoy. Board, I just texted you some links to two media hits today. I'm happy to say they're both very positive. The first one is an entrepreneur course that we are now doing at Walker Career Center. In your packet, I've attached the course syllabus in partnership with Inner Power. This is a first year for this course, and I encourage you to take a look at that press conference. Our kids are excited for that. And I learned today from Ryan that most of the kids that are in this class are really doing it from a, how can I improve my community philanthropy type mindset? Not necessarily a millionaire mindset of wanting to own their own business or to make millions. So really excited about that. I shared with you earlier that Callie Hoppus, who was our Lakeside Teacher of the Year, has been named top twenty-five Teacher of the Year. We will find out on Friday if she moves on to the top ten, so I'll keep you posted on that. And the second link that I shared with you today, the State Board of Education received a presentation today from the Department of Ed to go over the latest I Read Three improvements. I am proud to say we had the largest gains in Marion County, over five percent. Dr. Jenner reached out to me this morning and congratulated us. And also, they highlighted Liberty Park and Lowell for increasing their average cut score by over twenty points. I texted back to Dr. Jenner, you know, appreciate you. Obviously, we have that partnership with the coaches. But I said hashtag just getting started, because we're not finished yet. That's my report.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate your superintendent's report and also the spotlights. Next on the agenda is the Warren Central Student Representative, Student Council President, Kavay King.
Good evening, board members and guests. Today, I want to update you all on what is currently happening at Warren Central High School. At the beginning of the school year, I created and sent out a student survey to the Student Council members. The purpose of this was to collect data on the school climate as well as collect suggestions to improve the school. Students reported back in the following areas: money for clubs, breakfast carts and access to them, and support for sports teams. Students have communicated a need for club funds. Clubs have served a vital part, sorry. Clubs have served a vital part to the Warrior culture as they provide equitable experience for all Warren Central High School students. To continue to provide safe spaces for all students, funds are needed for events, travel, and competitions. Clubs do have the option to fundraise, however, students are requesting assistance for minor operation costs. Students are appreciative of the availability of breakfast carts that the students have. However, they have communicated a desire to have more breakfast carts, more breakfast food variety, and more locations. I have discussed these concerns with Ms. Taylor, and I will continue to work with her on this. They have also communicated that they would love to see an increase in the support received from the Warren community. One of their main concerns is they feel the football team gets more attention than any other sport. How to solve this, we can acknowledge other sports more in district literature and advertising, be more engageful, and to put it quite simply, try and get more people to come to their events. We understand that a big part of the Warrior Nation is football, however, we can all agree that football is just a part of what makes Warren Warriors Warriors. Many students have reported that their parents struggle with staying updated on school updates. Ms. Taylor communicates a lot via Parent Square, but some parents don't have access to Parent Square. As we know, the parents have the opportunity to sign up at back-to-school night, but some parents are unable to attend that night. Because of this, the Student Council is currently in the process of planning a night specifically for signing up for Parent Square. On another note, the students are very happy about the access to the tunnel. Most of the students really like the new construction. Students also like that this year we are doing tardies. They like the extra five minutes they have to get to class instead of having to go straight to the courtroom. Even though it is still the beginning of the school year, we have a lot going on already. Homecoming is coming up and will be September 2nd. We will also be planning to have a school-wide pep rally on September 1st. We will be celebrating the Class of 2024, the hundredth graduating class, by having a senior sunrise on Friday, the 18th. This Friday is also senior night for the football team, and they will be playing Fort Wayne-Snyder. Girl soccer will also be having a game this Saturday, the 19th. Volleyball also has a game on the 17th against Franklin Central. There are many more games on that, that we would love for you guys to come out and support. You can check the Warren website under athletics to see these events. Thank you and have a great day.
Very good.
Kavay?
Very, very good.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Dorsey. We have Mr. Redwine in the audience. Quill, did you hear a comment about the carts, the breakfast carts? Are they in the wrong location, or are they, do you just need more of them?
A little bit of both. We would be okay with more of them, and then also put those in a different location.
Okay.
I'm having to check that out tomorrow.
Okay, there you go.
That's very good. Hey, great presentation. Really appreciate getting that information. Next on the agenda is Mayor's Neighborhood Advocate, City Announcements from Brennan Edwards. Brennan?
Good evening, everybody. All right, so there has been a lot going on this past summer. And there's a few more things coming up in the end of the month for summer and going into September. So many people may already know about the Far East Side Community Council. I have been informed that they did not have their Taco Tuesday this week, but they're gonna have two next month, actually. So if you are interested in learning more about the Far East Side Community Council or P30, that is a great opportunity to do that and also connect with others in the neighborhood as well. So that is one part of it. The other thing is, I've, I've learned that they are actually going to have in-person meetings. Now, I'm not sure if they're going to be hybrid, but they definitely will be in-person at P30 starting next month. They still will have their virtual meeting this month, but starting next month, they will have an in-person at P30. So that's one thing for sure everybody should be aware of. The next thing is the, there's a few more dates for the Solar United Neighbors. I mentioned the solar program before. There are still a few more dates for that. We have Thursday, so, you know, that's the 17th, and that's going to be 6:30. If you're interested in that Zoom webinar, the next date for that, if you're not, if you can't make it that date, is going to be Monday, September 18th, and that's also going to be 6:30. And then you have the final in-person meeting that's going to be at College Avenue Branch Library. That is Tuesday, September 12th, and that's going to be at 6:00 PM. Okay, so going into a few more things for the month. All the pools are closed, of course, but there are still splash pads, and those are still going to be open from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Some of them are open between 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, so that's some of the things for parks that you should be aware of. Also, they still have bidding opportunities, so look into that if you would like to on their website. And then they are looking out for programs for partners, partners, so it's a partner call-out. If anybody would like to have a program at Indy Park anywhere in the city, make sure to look into that as well. The applications for that are due by the 25th of this month, so that's another thing for parks for sure. And then the concerts and movies are still going to go on until the end of September. So there's still plenty of time, just look into their, into their website and social media for updates on that. So we have the Fort Ben Branch opening up. That's going to open up on Saturday. I'll be there. Make sure to see what that looks like. If you're interested in seeing another piece of the Indy Public Library Branch. And you can be able to see a little bit more about that on Saturday, but if you can't make it, of course, it's still going to be open afterwards. That's one grand opening. Another grand opening you should be aware of is the Indy Fresh Market. So a lot of people have been paying close attention to that, just like the Fort Ben Branch Library. That grand opening is going to be on August 30th. And if you're not sure exactly where that is, I have the address for you right here. So that's East 38th Street in Sheridan. So if you're interested in that, please check out their social media as well, indyfreshmarket.com. And they have email and they have phone numbers and everything as well, so go ahead and check out their information for that. You have the Public Health Summit Series. So anybody who has experience, somebody that has Alzheimer's, or even if yourself may be facing that potentially, there is a community forum coming up on the 26th. And that is going to be at Martin University, so 2186 North Sherman Drive, and that is between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. So write that down. If you are interested in that, be able to visit alz.org/indiana/programs, be able to learn more about that. And of course, register if you'd like. And then speaking a little bit more about the events on this side of town for this month, you have the one-on-one tech time. Some people have already been aware of that, but if you do not own a device, then they can be able to show you how some are used. And of course, if you have one, they can be able to give you some more pointers and more tips. That's going to be Wednesday, August 30th, between 2:00 PM and 4:00 PM, if you are interested. Register at the, at the reference desk when they're open. And then, of course, keep, and keep in mind that they will probably have more events like that in the future. So if you can't make that one, let them or ask them, ask them if they have another time and let them know you still want to be involved. Then we have Soul Food Sundays. That's the fourth Sunday each month at Cafe. I'm trying to make myself available for that. They have that all the way till September. So there's free food, games, things like that. There are also other resources that people may not know about. The Affordable Housing Resource Programs is something that the Department of Metropolitan Development has put together for everybody. I've already shared this out virtually. You can find this on Nextdoor. You can find this by emailing me and asking for a copy, of course. Or you can email DMD directly and ask for a copy, no problem. But it's also in Spanish as of right now. This is a nice little list to be able to put together, different resources you can reach out to if you have housing concerns. Just kind of something in between all the events to be aware of. We also have the New Beginnings Fellowship Church. They're going to have a home buyers program workshop. And that is between, oh, it's not yet, 9:00 AM and then 4:30 PM, so it's an all-day thing. And that is going to be an event on Saturday, September 9th. It's a lot of stuff going on September 9th, okay? This is one, and then there's two others, one of them being the Chinese Festival as well. But that is going to be a lunch and complimentary childcare provided service as well as the, all the workshop benefits of fair housing, understanding credit, things like that. So put that into your calendar if you're interested in that. INRC, I have to say, as an alumni of Public Allies, that I don't feel like enough people know about it. And I have to say that they still have applications open for those who are, have already graduated from high school. If you would like to have somebody be a part of their program, very, very wonderful personal and, personal and professional development program as soon as you graduate high school, up to any age, actually. You can be able to look, learn more about that on their website and their social media, INRC. But then also, they have the Collaborative Spirit Award. And this is an award that recognizes accomplishments by neighborhood organizations and associations. And you can be able to nominate somebody to win an award of $500. And that application deadline goes all the way until September 25th. Learn more about that online as well. And that is only one of many different things, including information sessions that they have been doing. The one that they just had on Tuesday was actually for the, the Center for Conflict Resolution. And a lot of people still know about that one, but it's really wonderful that they have information sessions available virtually for everybody to participate in. Another thing is the IMPD. They just got this flyer today to recognize the 9/11 memorial. They have a blood drive. They have a donate blood, save a life, September 8th, which is a Friday, 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, if you would like to be a participant in that. 201 North Salem, East District Headquarters. Let's see here. Oh, yeah, so we have mainly, all that stuff is available already. I already shared it out. Most of that has been available online through email and Nextdoor. Again, my emails are going out, and people are sharing it, very happy to hear. And then you would be able to contact me during my office hours or reach out to me by email, brennan.edwards@indy.gov to learn more. And of course, if you would like to have any suggestions or share, have me share things on your behalf, I'm okay with doing that too. As long as they're public serving and everything, of course. And then if you have any questions, I'll be open to that as well. Any questions right now for the time being?
Thank you for that great report. Do you have any information to share regarding the Eskenazi new mobile fresh unit?
Oh, the mobile units, yes. So I don't have a flyer for that with me right now, but yeah, definitely keep in mind that they do travel. That they're, I believe it's called the Care Centers or Care, their Care Program. And they travel between, they own Avento Meadows. I think one of them is actually John Marshall. So look into that online, and I do have flyers for that usually. I have to make more copies again. But yeah, definitely check that out if anybody's interested in having that, that service come to them. There are dates set out all the way till the rest of this month. All right. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Brennan, thank you. Really appreciate you taking out the time. You sprint around the community, Warren community, and also the Far East period. So we really appreciate you, really appreciate you coming by the Warren Township Development Association and filling us in on some things. So again, good props, my friend.
Thank you very much.
Rachel, do we have any board correspondence?
No, we do not.
What about green cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, good. We're moving right along. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And it includes approvals of minutes, financial report payroll claims, financial report claims registration and electronic payments, financial report year-to-date summary of fund balances, human resource report, field trip requests, permission to accept gifts and grants, change reports, and also use of school property. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Can we go to vote then? Yeah, let's, we'll just call it, yeah. Go ahead.
Gloria. Kevin. Abstain. Julia, Julie.
Yes.
I don't know anyone's names. I apologize.
Yes.
LaShawna.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the motion passes.
Good, thank you. Next item on the agenda, reports. First up is Catherine Basham, Warren Council of PTAs.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey and Board and fellow guests for inviting the Warren Township Council of PTAs to present a little bit about what we've been accomplishing, uh, over the past year. So wait, Anne. I'm used to a touchscreen. Okay, as you know, um, all of our officers on the council PTA are volunteers. So I serve as president for this upcoming year. Tanya Turner is our Sunny Day Coordinator. Veronica Grimes is our Discount Card Coordinator. Robin Calms is our Warren Home Fest Coordinator. Diane Simon is our Treasurer and Kim Wathers is our Secretary. So our mission, uh, for the council PTA is to unify and strengthen our 15 local PTAs or PTSAs, uh, in Warren Township. We also operate the Sunny Day Food, Clothing and Toiletry Pantry. We host Warren Home Fest every year. And then we provide a discount card to all of our local PTAs. It's like an extra benefit incentive for joining each of the local PTAs. Each of our local PTAs offer a variety of different benefits, but this is one that is universal across all 15. Oh, I did it again. Sorry. Okay. Our 15 local PTAs, uh, there is one in every, uh, every elementary school, so all nine elementary schools, all three of the middle school, intermediate middle schools. Uh, we have one at the Warren Central High School, one at Warren Early Childhood Center, and one at the Warren Online Academy. So a quick glance at what all of our local PTA units, uh, several of their programs, services that they provide for students, families, staff, those in the community. Uh, each of them provide a back-to-school night, uh, to help sponsor Warren Home Fest, uh, help coordinate with Warren Cleanup Day, celebrate core celebrations, staff appreciation days, teacher school supplies, uh, school clothing closets, fall, spring, winter festivals, bingo nights, or in particular, the Butterball Bingo, uh, roller skating parties, open gym nights, parent night outs, color fun runs, STEM nights, family dances, and that's just to name a few. Those are like the fun events. There's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes too, that each of our PTAs tackle. Last year, we worked on coordinating all of the 15 local PTAs to, um, set up their own Gmail account. So as you guys know, there's turnover when you are volunteering for an organization. So every single one of them last year set up a PTA email account that's specific to them. I know you gotta get your glasses on for this. But, um, so that was one thing that we tackled. The second thing that we tackled with the help of Logan is that if you go to the parent tab on each of the school's website, you will now see information on that specific PTA. So it's all loaded there. So hopefully as, as families go to the websites and they're perusing through, they're like, oh, look, parent, parent organization. And they can click on that and they can get the details. It will tell who the officers are, some of the events that they do, uh, but it also gives that email, that contact information. They can also obviously go through the front office of each school, but we wanted to give, um, families a quicker, direct route to get to, uh, each of the PTA officers. So that is where that Gmail account came in. And one of the beauties of our Morehead Community Resource Center is that they invite the, uh, council PTA to their event. So the last two events that were held at Morehead, um, we provided this to, this flyer to all of, um, the, the patrons that, uh, visited during their events. So everybody walked out with one of these flyers that we highlighted each of the PTA units. Okay. And then nobody knows, so this is the first time that we are announcing this, but our Warren Central High School PTSA was selected, one of four PTAs in the entire nation, to be part of this Walmart Business Pilot Program. And they will be given a stipend of $1,250. So it's pretty exciting. So a shout out to the Warren Central PTSA. Okay. So the second thing that our council PTA tackles is the Sunny Day Food, Toiletry, Clothing Pantry. Again, all volunteers that lead, uh, this, this pantry. So we have got Carissa Dollar as our administrator. Tanya Turner is in charge of food. Sharon Berry is in charge of our toiletry section. Sue Ballard is in charge of our clothing section. I am in charge of the deliveries. And then Karen Kinley is in charge of our preorder process, which I will talk about in just a minute. So Sunny Day was established back in September 2013. So we are coming up on our 10th year anniversary. Uh, we started out over at Heather Hills Elementary, now Highlander Park. Uh, it is named after Sonny Caldwell, who was a custodian there at Heather Hills, made a huge impact on those around him. And then when our coordinators 10 years ago got together to establish Sunny Day, they named it after him for all of, um, the kindness and the goodwill that he brought to the community. In 2014, we partnered with Gleaners Food Bank. In 2016, we partnered with Midwest Food Bank. And then in 2020, we relocated over to the Morehead Community Resource Center. So Sunny Day is open twice a month. The first one is kind of funny. I don't want to tell people that we're open the second Saturday every month because we're not. You have to pay attention to, um, the Friday. So the Saturday that follows the second Friday, because that's when we get our Gleaners delivery, is when we are open. And we're open from 9:00 to 11:00 on that particular Saturday. But we are open the fourth Thursday of every month, and that is from 6:00 to 7:30. That gives our patrons two options to get to us, just in case they maybe work weekends or they work evenings. So we pick two different dates, two different times, um, for that purpose. We offer three ways to get food. So you can do a preload, which this is a brand new, well, we started it last year. And we offered, there's about 80 people that have given us their email address and they can go in and fill out a Google form and tell us exactly what they want. And that includes food in the toiletries. Then they, uh, drive over to our delivery bay and we load the food and those items into their car and away they go. And it helps cut down on those that come in and want to personally grocery shop for themselves in the grocery store because the line was getting long. So we split it up into three options. So you can do the preload. You can shop for yourself in the grocery store. Or you can do the fast food grab-and-go service, which we have then put a wagon together of food and they can choose that and away they go. And then they load their, their cars themselves and then we grab the wagons and we start the process again. It's, you know, it's, if you haven't been there, we would love for you to come and volunteer. It's fun. We enjoy working with our community and in two hours, you know, you leave with a smile on your face because you've helped a lot of people. We also have, um, a stand set up for emergency supplies for Morehead themselves to gather food so they can come in. We've shown them, you know, exactly where items are. We've also showed them where we have, um, items stored in our walk-in freezer or in the, the walk-in refrigerator too. So they can grab items from both. Our biggest supporters, so I wanted to highlight them tonight, obviously Gleaners. They give us $1,000 a month, which goes quickly, but they do give us $1,000 a month that we order from them and they deliver to us, which is wonderful. Midwest Food Bank, um, they allow us to pick up eight pallets of food once a month. And we have partnered with Audrey's Place Furniture. If you're not aware of them, they're located off of 10th Street. And they give us their box truck and their driver. And we go down to Midwest Food Bank. I get to select the eight pallets of food, uh, primarily from them. It's drinks, chips, cereal, things of that nature. We get the, the vegetables, the fruits, uh, canned goods, things of that nature from Gleaners. But, uh, we go down, we pick it up, and then my volunteers help me unload that because there is not a lift gate on this box truck. So we are, we're sweating by the end of that delivery of eight pallets of food, getting it off the, you know, off the box truck and onto the ground, but, um, but we enjoyed it. So those are our two biggest ones. And then after that, um, we really rely on our community to help, you know, support us financially. So we have partnered with Morehead Community Resource Center, the, uh, Dilly family, who is actually Sonny Caldwell's family, uh, Greg and Linda Rogers, uh, the Indianapolis East Rotary Club, Meyer, Barrett and Stokely, Aldi's. So this is a new one. Uh, we have a new partnership with them. Every Friday, we can go and select items that, it's kind of eye-opening, um, what they, what grocery stores aren't allowed to keep on shelves. So some of the items maybe are going to expire, but some aren't. So like somebody ripped open the box of cereal. Well, nobody's going to grab that box of cereal, right? So they put it in a cart and there's things like that that I get to pick up on Fridays from them that somebody has just damaged, but it's perfectly fine. You just put a little piece of tape on, you know, the cardboard and, and away we go. So, um, so that's a new partnership with Aldi's. Indiana Diaper Bank, we also started that last summer and that has been a huge help to our patrons. We have a lot of families and everybody who has children knows how expensive diapers are. They're really expensive. So once a month, um, we place an order and we go and pick up our diapers at Indiana Diaper Bank and then we put them on our shelves. And, uh, our patrons just have to fill out a, a quick form and truthfully, they just, they tell us and then we, we submit it to make sure the form gets submitted, so. And then we partner with two dentists. So we haven't had to buy, since we moved over to Morehead Community Resource Center, any dental supplies. So Beallian Wright and Post Road Dentistry, you know, two local, right here on Post Road, uh, dentists have partnered with us and they give us toothpaste, toothbrushes, floss, things of that nature. We ask and they don't hesitate, which is really nice. David Electric has a small owned family business, but they are a significant financial supporter every year. So it, I think we're on year four and we appreciate their generosity. And then the Indy Hunger Network. So they, um, they provide us with just knowledge support. We go to summits to learn about how to do things better and grant opportunities. So anytime they offer a grant, we apply for something. So, um, a few years back, we got some equipment that we needed, so that was through the Indy Hunger Network. Okay. This is why we rely on financial support from our community. So you can see when COVID hit, our numbers jumped from just under 5,000 to 7,7, or just under 8,000. But look at what happened last year. I mean, we, we think we're out of the pandemic and we are seeing more people than we've ever seen before. So we're almost at, you know, 12,700 families served in one year. And we can't do that just with our partnership with Gleaners and Midwest Food Bank. So that would, if, the number of people that we see would clear our shelves. So, uh, the community support is significant for us. Okay. We have business cards. If anybody ever wants a business card, let me know. So the top part you can see, we have the front side, uh, has English and Spanish on it. And then the backside is our address, gives the email address. We have a website, so everything's located on the website if you go to sunnyday.org. And then we have, um, yard signs. So if any of the schools are in need of yard signs, we can place them. Um, a few of them, they're out there. I haven't checked all of them this year to see if they're there, but we have them in English and Spanish too. So that way families that go into each of the schools, if they need support, hopefully the sign would stand out. And then those business cards are in the front office of all of our schools. The next item that council runs is Warren Home Fest. So if you look at the little flyer here, um, it was established back in 1980. So this has been going on for quite a while and it's a wonderful, uh, community event. So this year it is on Friday, September 1st. And we have relocated it a couple of years back. It is completely outdoors and we're on the northeast part of campus. So that's where the soccer fields are. And we, uh, we offer the Fun Run, which is pre-K through eighth grade, carnival games. They are run by our local PTAs. Uh, you can buy a $5 wristband and you play unlimited games. We have a variety of vendors. Uh, we reach out through social media and through, um, just emailing different like vendor, uh, corporations, uh, to get interest. So there's a variety of vendors that come out to our event. And we have a free, we started this about two years ago, a free, it's a staff versus student kickball game. First year it didn't go so well. Uh, we had a lot of students, very little staff, but that changed. So last year, you know, it grew and it, um, it was, it was a lot of fun. And some of the, the kiddos from the Fun Run came over and ran for the staff and that made a big difference. So they didn't, they wanted to kick, but they didn't want to run. So the little kids were like, I'll run. So, um, it's fun and that's free. Uh, the food trucks, so we have a variety of food trucks. We try to have between three and five every year. And then we have the parade. So it's, uh, the Warriors Big and Small Parade. In the last couple of years, um, it's been highlighting clubs. So the principal of each of our schools nominates a club within their building and they get to represent the school, uh, during halftime, uh, the home, you know, homecoming, um, football game. So that's, it's pretty cute because, uh, the high school students in the stands, they, they stand up and they cheer for their school. And it's, we, you know, we include all of them. So it's the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school even has one, Warren Online Academy will be there, Renaissance is there. So there's a variety of schools. Uh, Early Childhood Center, I don't want to leave them out either. So, um, they all get an option, you know, a, a chance to participate in the, in the parade. So anyway, it's a fun event. This is our shirt for this year. We chose purple, so just something different. Had some complaints that the black last year was really hot. So new color, purple. And this is the flyer. So at back-to-school night, all of our schools had this flyer and that's everybody that we had established at that point in time from like the vendor standpoint. But it's a fundraiser for, um, all of our local PTAs. So we use, um, yeah, we, we, the council PTA collects what we need to, to give back, um, for some of our behind-the-scenes bills that we have to pay, which is like insurance. And then we give a $500 award to one of our PTAs and we give a $100 award to one of our PTAs. And after that, we take what we gather from Warren Home Fest and we divide it by the number of PTAs that participate. And it's a, it's a nice fundraiser for each of the local PTAs. And it's a way for the community to see that we're, we're there, we're out there, we want to give back, um, and that they're, you know, there's a way for them to get involved, if they would like to get more involved or just to be, you know, connect a name with an event that's happening at their school. They can come by the carnival game and be like, oh, yeah, yeah, I remember this. And that's the PTA. So, and, you know, gives them a chance to thank, thank the workers there at the, at the carnival games. Okay. The next thing our council PTA tackles, as I mentioned before, is this discount card. So, um, this year, we had quite a few companies participate. And if you sign up for any PTA, doesn't matter which one in Warren Township you choose, you get the discount card free, it's included with your membership. But we have Art Skillet, Blueberry Hill Pancake House, Culvers on East Washington Street, and also on North Post Road, Cumberland Dairy Queen, El Haripio, Glenn's Creative Services, Guadalajara Grill, Jiffy Lube, Parched, Ransburg YMCA, Roller Cave, Skyline Chili on East Washington Street, and then the Warren Central High School Bookstore. Then if you need to contact us, we have our email address. It's warrenptacouncil@gmail.com. We're on Facebook as well. And I think that's it. So if there are any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Is it too late to, um, get more vendors?
No, 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 no. Yeah, no. There's, I'm at 22 right now and yeah, there's definitely room for more than that. Because like I said, we're outside. More the merrier.
All right. Is there a cost for them to?
There is. It's a $25 space. We provide the table and chairs though, so they don't even have to lug that out there. Yeah. They just have to reach out to warrenptacouncil@gmail.com or through Facebook, either way, or just directly to me, because that's actually what I'm in charge of. So, um, we'll just K Basham one if you're a Warren person, but.
Hopefully we can get some more people from the community to be vendors.
Yeah, yeah. That'd be wonderful.
Thank you, Catherine. Really appreciate that. A lot of information and you guys are chock full of, uh, great things. Thanks. And next on the item is a college and career readiness update by Doug Harder.
Good evening, President Dorsey and Dr. Hanson and members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight, uh, to be able to give you an update on the work, uh, around the journey of a graduate. And specifically to kind of give you a, a review of what we did, um, last year, as well as a preview of what we're going to be doing this last year as well as a preview of what we're going to be doing this year. And so to begin with, I want to start with our why. As we began this work last year to really further develop and to enhance and to implement the journey of a graduate, because as you know, it's been with us now for four years, we really wanted to capture why. Why are we doing this? Why are we engaged in this, in this work? And so this was a compilation of input from a lot of our staff members, community members. And that is to, we want to build upon our strengths to have an even greater impact on our students and the community. So it's a recognition of all the good things we're already doing and it's building upon that. The second thing is to really increase the opportunities for all of our students. And so this is really a means to provide equity for all of our students. It's also to use an intentional, community connected approach. It's also to provide hope, which is powerful for our students, for our community. It's to provide hope and purpose for our students as they travel through our school system and it's to ensure our graduates remain competitive. And so that's our why and that's why I want to start with in terms of the activities of why we're engaging in this. So let's look at what we did last year around this work and it starts with our district being involved with a lot of exploring and learning and building capacity. And so as you're aware, we have partnered with a couple of organizations, the CISC, the Central Indiana Education Service Center is who selected us to be a part of the 3E Grant. We were one of seven districts to participate in that. And then with that, we are partnering with an organization called Forward Next Generation Learning that has provided a model for transformation of schools. And so we participated as a district in two study visits to school districts that have implemented the Forward NGL model. So there was a group of us led by Dr. Hanson as well as Mr. Dorsey. We went to Akron, Ohio in September and then in March, we had another team that went down to the academies of Nashville. And Nashville is kind of the original school district that kind of implemented this model. And so it was really great to see both models. Akron really is a K to 12 approach as opposed to Nashville is really a high school approach. And so I think our group felt like we really got even more so out of our Akron visit because that's modeling more what we are attempting to do. We also hosted the Forward NGL coaches that have been assigned to our district and that was in February and they came to Warren to just learn about us, to hear about all the things that we are already doing. And so they met, they were here all week and they met with students, teachers, building leaders, community partners, district leaders, just to listen, have conversation and again to learn more about us. And so that was a great experience. So in terms of this, about 135 individuals from just the MSD of Warren, and that doesn't include our students and our parents who are a part of things like the Explore Visit. They participated in some form of a Forward NGL or Indiana Career Collaborative activity because there was also some professional development that was provided by the CISC and that's where the term Indiana Career Collaborative comes into. That is now kind of the new name for the seven districts that were chosen for the 3E Grant. So they provided some PD throughout the year that some of our staff participated in. So again, a lot of exploring, learning, building capacity. We also spent a lot of time as a district communicating, discussing, building awareness about this model and what we would like to do as a district. And so you can see presentations were given to 16 different school and community groups, reaching a total of about 272 individuals in addition to one-on-one presentations to five different companies and community organizations that are very interested in becoming partners with us. And that includes companies like Eli Lilly, Community Health, Indiana State Museum. I also like to highlight that as a part of that Explore Visit to Warren, we were provided with a report that just provided kind of a summary of findings, which highlighted a lot of our strengths as a district, but then also some things for us to consider as maybe opportunities that we can build upon. And so in late April, as a part of a district leadership team meeting, we created an activity that we really dug into that report and had our district leaders really respond to those things. And we divided the group into grade bands. So we had, you know, a group of the pre-K to four, we had a group from five to eight and a group from nine to adult, so that they were looking at those questions. They were looking at the report through their lens. And so that was really a great activity. And so the last thing from last year, we also spent a lot of time as a district helping build our community connected approach. And again, we are blessed, we are research, resources rich here in Indianapolis and we already have a lot of great partnerships, but we still were able to develop six new partnerships that will really have a big impact on us. And I like to just highlight two. One is Employee Indy. Employee Indy has become our strategic partner, our convening organization. Another would be our, help to be our implementation partner in this work. And so they are going to work side by side with us throughout this process. And so we are really thrilled to have Employee Indy come alongside us. Another one I like to highlight is P30, which is just down the road and they've just been fantastic to work with and we're just scratching the surface in terms of what we want to do. I know Dr. Hanson mentioned the entrepreneurship class that was announced today. We were going to work with P30 in terms of how we can connect our students with those local entrepreneurs that are right here on the east side, providing internships and opportunities like that. So we're really excited to work with P30. So this roadmap, it's kind of our journey as we've kind of started this journey to work on, add to our journey of a graduate. And so last year was really phase one, a lot of exploring, a lot of gathering information. So now we are beginning this school year in phase two, which is called Envision. And so I'll talk a little bit more about our big, you know, activity here coming up in October. It's called the Envision Day. But this just kind of gives you an idea of kind of where we're headed and we'll talk a little bit more about after Envision, then comes into the phase three and that's creating a strategic plan. And that would be specifically around the plan of investing in the future of our graduates. So as we continue this work and we continue to build our intentional K to 12 college and career readiness framework, we are being intentional to align that with the Forward NGL framework, their model. And you can see here, their model consists of three different strands. There's a strand for transforming teaching and learning. There's a strand for transforming culture, systems, structures of school. The third one is transforming partnerships between schools and community. So this slide highlights some examples of that alignment. And in some cases, these are things that we're already doing. And then other cases, it's things that we have just started to do. And then obviously, there's also opportunities of where else can we build upon in terms of our structure and alignment with the Forward NGL model. So I'd just like to highlight a couple of things. And so again, this is a K to 12 approach. If you, again, think about the 3E Grant, at the elementary level, we're looking at exploring. And then at the middle, intermediate middle school level, we're looking at engaging. And then at the high school level, we're looking at experience. And so in terms of just an example of transforming teaching and learning, last year and then fully implemented this year is a program called Zello. And so that provides students with an opportunity to kind of explore their strengths, explore possible careers that they're interested in. And so that's a, that's a new program that we're implementing fully this year. So we're really excited about that. At the high school level, we start having conversations about creating a project based learning class through English 12. And so this year, they're going to pilot that as a part of a unit that's all around this kind of work. So that kind of relates really well with that transforming teaching and learning as a part of the Forward model. I'll switch over to the transforming partnerships between schools and community. Again, I'll just highlight a couple of things. The Junior Achievement BizTown and JobSpark, that's something we've been doing for several years. So that's a praise that we've already done, we already have that in place. But there were some new things that we were able to kind of build upon. Last year, all of our fourth graders were able to go to the Indianapolis Symphony Orchestra, their discovery concert. And what a great, and again, what we would call a great guaranteed experience for all of our fourth graders. So now our challenge is where else can, what else can we develop for our students as they travel K to 12? And then lastly, as I've already mentioned, at the high school level, we're beginning our partnership with Employee Indy. And so specifically, they have a program called Talent Bound, which is a continuum of services. And so this year, we are looking to implement about two or three of those services such as bringing in guest speakers, perhaps having a class go and do a company tour. And so Employee Indy will help us kind of navigate that. So we're really excited about this work. So now to kind of a preview of this coming year of what we can expect to be a part of. And so the first thing is the Envision Day and Dr. Hanson mentioned that this will be on October the 3rd. It will be held at the Marriott East. And so this is an opportunity, as you can kind of see from these two pictures, this gives us an opportunity to really envision what is it that we want our students who are current seniors who are going to graduate in June and they're close to their futures, what is it that we need to create for them? You know, what are their dreams in terms of what would they like to do beyond the doors of Warren Central High School? But we also, our challenge is also to keep in mind that next generation of learners, you know, the kindergarten class that just started a couple of weeks ago, they're the class of 2036. And that makes me feel old to say that, but when they graduate from high school, what's the world going to look like for them? What opportunities do we need to create so that they can be successful in 2036? So our challenge on this Envision Day is to kind of think that way. And so it's not just thinking for today, it's thinking down the road for our students. So just a little bit more about what's the purpose of our Envision Day and who will participate? And so the first one is to engage in discussion and to reach consensus about what we want here in Warren and in our community. And so it goes back to having further discussion about what is our why? Can we reach, what is our shared vision? What are our shared expectations? And so then with that is to further develop and implement the vision of a journey of a graduate. We are certainly not looking to start from scratch and to remove the journey of a graduate. It's how can we reexamine that? What can we do to enhance it? And so that's, that's part of what we'll be doing that day. But then also, we have decided to create a corresponding journey of a learner concept and visual so that it really speaks to the K to four students and staff. And then lastly, this work will build the foundation for the next version of our strategic plan to invest in the future of our graduates. And so again, this will be a great opportunity for us. Who will participate? We are, we're looking to invite close to 200 people to participate in this day with us. And so this will consist of students, teachers, building leadership, district leadership, parents, community partners. Community partners, we are strategically trying to have at least 30% or more of this entire group consist of community partners. And that includes higher education partners like IU Bloomington, Ivy Tech, University of Indianapolis. And so that's, that's what we're planning on for this day. So then what are we looking for in terms of outcomes and next steps? So after this day on October 3rd, we will have a draft version of our vision statement as a district. We will also have identified those critical knowledge, skills, experiences and attributes that we believe graduates need to be successful. Again, regardless of whether they choose to enroll, enlist or become employed. We will also have a recommitment to and a draft enhancement of our journey of a graduate concept and visual, and then a draft journey of a learner concept and visual. And so what we'll have is after this day, we'll have these drafts. We will then seek stakeholder input in wherever circles we can. And so this could take, you know, six to eight weeks to gather more stakeholder input. So even those folks that can't maybe participate on October 3rd, they'll have an opportunity to participate in these stakeholder groups as we solicit their input on what they believe is going to be important as a part of this work. Once we feel we've gotten sufficient stakeholder input, we will meet again for what will be called an Envision Day Two. So that could be sometime like in December or perhaps in January, where we will then finalize the vision statement. We will finalize the journey of a graduate concept visual as well as then the journey of a learner. And then we will then, from there, begin the process of creating our next strategic plan to invest in the future of our graduates. So with that, I would like to open up to any questions that you may have for me.
I just had a question. At the beginning of your presentation, you said that you invited different partners within the community to take a tour and had a big, you know, meeting and everything. Did I hear you say that you excluded parents?
No, no. I think you're referring to our Explore Visit when the Ford folks. No, we had parents. They visited three of our elementary schools. They visited all of our intermediate middle schools. They visited our high school, Career Center, and then they spent time here at our central office. Parents were included in all of those buildings and all of those groups.
Okay. So the discussion that you had, were their parents visible with those partners during that time too, the workshop?
Right. So how it worked was they had focus groups. So the coaches met with like a group of students. Then they met with a group of parents. They met with staff members. They met with building leadership and they asked questions and listened to their feedback. And so, so that's, that's how it was, how it functioned.
Okay. I was really curious about that because parents is a very big part of knowing what's going on. So I was, you know, wanted to make sure they were a part of all of that planning and discussion.
Absolutely. We value parent input tremendously, being a, being a parent of a high schooler myself.
Yes.
Hey, thanks Doug. Good presentation.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is.
Awesome program.
Next on the program correction, next agenda item on reports is team evaluation.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, community. August is customarily the month when we simply remind the board and share with the board our team evaluation document, just to put it front and center, ahead of when we have to turn it into the DOE, no later than September 15th. And so recall that in recent years, certified evaluations have become under the auspices of the Human Resources Department. And also recall that last year was a big focus of ours was for both certified and non-certified evaluations, but particularly with certified to, to help administrators support leadership with evaluative responsibilities, to help teachers build capacity, to get away from a compliance oriented focus, to helping teachers build capacity by setting professional goals, building a sense of efficacy and agency, encouraging administrators to get in the classrooms early and often to develop that rapport, to really develop some common academic language with their teachers, to really understand the work that they're doing with their students. And so, and to continue to really do high quality observations and helping with the collection of evidence so that we can encourage administrators to continue to develop the skills to have constructive, positive, high quality feedback conversations with teachers. So that work was really reestablished coming out of the pandemic last year. The work is still very important and we continue to focus on that this year. And so I want to publicly thank my colleague Pam Griffin, Deputy Human Resource Officer, her background and experience with being a principal and having conducted hundreds of observations and having hundreds of feedback conversations. hundreds of feedback conversations is just extremely invaluable. And I'm always learning a lot from her over the years on how, what makes really good evaluation. And a lot of that's translated to our support staff with her leadership. And so she does a lot of great work supporting our administrators because, as you can imagine, it's, there's really an art and science to doing a good evaluation. And so for her to day-to-day work with this key area and to help our leaders build the capacity to do, to do a good job and learn what it takes to do it is just outstanding. So without further delay, I want to turn it over to Pam to walk through our team evaluation document. Thanks Pam.
Good evening, President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, our esteemed board, and our community members. It's a privilege and an honor to be here this evening. As Brian shared, I'll be sharing our team evaluation handbook. I'll be highlighting a few things that are different than probably what you noticed from last year, and also taking an opportunity to highlight some of the new and improved processes, and also to share with you that coming soon, you will be able to see a, an evaluation dashboard that not only highlights what we're able to do for our classified, or excuse me, our certified staff, but also how we've been working towards personalizing evaluation processes for our operations team. And we started that with our bus drivers and monitors. And we're very excited, we're beginning the process for our operations teams and personalizing evaluation experiences for our groundskeepers, our mechanics, our plumbers, everybody who contributes to the success of our schools every day. Alrighty. You'll see that the format looks pretty similar, but one of the things that I wanted to make sure this year that we provided additional clarity on within our team handbook is in the area of our Office of Exceptional Learners. Within our rubrics, we provide additional support and feedback to all of our teachers who are in special education. There's a lot of time and effort dedicated to writing thorough and excellent IEPs that are personalized for students that meet the needs of their learning as well as their growth. And some of the feedback that I received from principals and from our OEL team was making sure that principals had clarity and better understanding of what our performance categories meant when looking at the IEP quality and compliance rubric. And so, we're going to pop that open. So we wanted to make sure that when we are looking at an IEP, there are 49 indicators within 12 domains that Allison Woods's team goes in and evaluates for every teacher that writes rubrics or writes IEPs, excuse me, in our district. And we wanted to be really clear about what highly effective looks like within an IEP writing situation. And for our exceptional learners, teaching, or excuse me, our exceptional learner teachers in this category, this is 30% of their rubric. So again, we wanted to make sure that when we are thinking about highly effective and effectiveness in the area of writing IEPs, that we provided a clear definition of what those performance categories are, because it is different than when our OEL teachers are teaching and running small group instruction. Also, because we have been making revisions and we've also been just doing our best to create evaluation experiences for teachers that are more personalized, anything that has been updated or revised, I've highlighted here for you so that you can go in and take a look at that. One of the rubrics that we've spent a lot of time on in this past year, Michelle Eaton, the principal of the virtual, the virtual online academy, she worked to create a rubric that not only aligns with RISE, but also reflects the uniqueness of the teaching and learning experiences of our virtual teachers and their students. And so that rubric is there. We also updated and revised the Warren Central Department Chair Effectiveness Rubric, which also applies to the department chairs at Walker Career Center. We've made some enhancements to the IEP Quality Compliance Rubric. And I've also created some additional places here to go so that as you're reviewing, you can also take a look at our compliance training documents from the Office of OEL, which again, is an incredible reflection of the support that our teachers get in the writing of IEPs. Before this goes live to the DOE, we will be adding a new personalized rubric for the Warren Early Childhood Care Center. We've, Anne Marie has been working very hard on that. And I've just pushed that to Allison just a couple days ago, just to get her eyes on it and her feedback. And once that is provided, I'll take it through one more revision. And you'll begin to see before, I'll push this back out one more time to you guys to see when that is ready to go for your review. And then lastly, we are bringing the team committee back together again this year. One of the things that we want to make sure that we are intentional about is collecting input from our teachers and our support staff about their evaluation experiences, as well as our principals. This year with Senate Bill 486. We are going to get some flexibility back, which I think is going to be incredible in regards to what we want to do here in Warren for the evaluation experiences of our staff and for our leadership team. Doug just stood up here and talked about what we are doing to enhance the journey of the graduate. We want to make sure that we're creating those same experiences and opportunities for our teachers, our classified staff, everybody that has an impact on the day-to-day operations of our schools and the learning of our students. And if we want to make sure that we're creating to grow, or we're continuing to grow this experience for our students, we need to do the same thing for our incredible staff. Are there any questions that I can take at this time? All right. Thank you.
That was good. Good presentation. Really appreciate your efforts. Next agenda item is construction updates.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, and to all of our Warren family, like to present to you August construction update. The focus this evening will be on the high school with phase two pretty much completed. We have a few punch list items that we're working on. And while you watch tonight's presentation, I want you to think of three words: joy, rocky, and MTV Cribs.
Welcome to the new Walker Career Center. Today we're...
Two quick things. I have to thank Logan Hunt. Logan is phenomenal. Called him a couple of weeks ago and say, hey, I got some ideas. And he took it and ran with it. And I will be honest, I'm afraid of heights. And there's no way I would have been able to do that if it wasn't for Logan. So just saying, come on, come on. Also, Jordan Felton, she filled in as well. She was able to help with some of the filming. And my last request is, we got everyone but this group.
So I have a sign here. You've probably seen it on the video. So if I could have all the cabinet members and the board members come take a picture. So we can share our joy with everyone.
Right now? Yes, yes, we could do that real quick here.
The president.
All right, here you go. Kind of three are saying, share our joy. One, two, three.
Share our joy.
That was awesome. I look forward to your presentations.
I just wanted to say, my kids come home from school the first day, and the first words out of both of their mouths, and one of them had practiced, so it was three hours later, was, "The Commons is so pretty, and there's light." So, good job.
So are we, we got more? Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, do we have any yellow cards?
We do not.
We do not. Good, good, good. Okay, well, the, we on to our action. Well, first of all, let me just say, that was great. Great presentation. I don't know how many Emmys or Oscars you're going to get out of that, but that was cool stuff. Very creative, very creative. Thank you. Action items, the first action item is Chief Police, Marcus Clayton.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, and to our Warren family. Tonight, we respectfully ask the members of the Board of Education to consider the approval of Shane Ginnon as a new police chief. The chief of police is required to plan, direct, and review the activities and operations for the MSD Warren Township Police Department. This includes providing leadership and guidance for proactive measures that promote and ensure safety and security of our district. The chief of police ensures that the school police and safety security officers are aware of district policies and implementation of those policies, taking steps to train, evaluate, and monitor accountability. And as we know, the values and principles that are most important to this district and to our board, build relationships within the community, with our building leaders, and really become intertwined with the Far East Eye in order to better serve our students and our parents.
Very good. Could we get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Motion carries. Good. Thank you. Next action item is honoring Shirley Dorsey, Morehead Community Resource Center Library. Dr. Hanson?
President Dorsey, members of the board, it was my honor last month to bring this to you for discussion and tonight for action. Tonight, I'm asking you to approve formally that we name the Morehead Community Resource Center Library after Shirley Dorsey for the impact that she has had at Morehead and continues to have on promoting the love of reading.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Can we just call for, or, because I know, I don't see how we can do the abstain. I've got to abstain. Oh, it will, pleasure? Okay, well, let's see if it does that. Well, I do abstain from voting as this is a question of direct personal interest.
Mr. Dorsey, I'd like to break script. We have Ms. Shirley Dorsey here this evening, and I'd like to invite her up and shake hands with the board.
Um, Dr. Hanson, could she take a picture with the entire board? Thank you.
Go out again, go out again.
We'll come down to you.
Okay, that was pleasant. That was truly, truly, truly pleasant. Next agenda item is teachers' appreciation grants. Brian Simpkins.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, August is also customarily the month in which we just take another look at our teacher appreciation grant policy and make sure it's updated ahead of when I need to turn it into the state, to the Department of Education. So there aren't any changes. So recall that this is money that is appropriated by the Indiana General Assembly and administered by the Department of Education. Typically, we get the funds usually right before Thanksgiving, and we have 20 business days to make sure we get those stipends deposited into teachers' bank accounts. So it usually serves as a Christmas bonus typically, which is nice. But again, just for review, we, in Warren Township, we provide these stipends to all teachers, eligible teachers who were rated effective or highly effective from the previous school year across the district. And we just require that there's a, per the law, to have a 25% differential between the stipend amounts with regard to effective and highly effective teachers. Teachers just need to be actively employed by December 1st, and that's pretty much it. I'll take any questions.
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? We'll take the vote.
I made the motion, I was done.
Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like motion pass. Good.
Thank you.
Next action item is bid recommendation, early childhood center work room renovations.
Good evening, board members. Earlier this month, we accepted bids on a relatively small but important building renovation at the Warren Early Childhood Center. So we're going to be modifying the break room and the kitchen area for our teachers and adults in the building to make it a much nicer space for them. We're able to take advantage of some grant money to make this happen. We have a recommendation from our architect for the low bidder, and so I would ask for the board's approval to award the contract to the low bidder.
So moved. I'll second it.
Any discussion? We'll push for the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we've got 16 discussion items. And what we're going to do is, we've got three presenters. Dr. Hanson will present the first seven, and then he'll pass that off to Brian Simpkins for the six, for his six, and then, of course, pass that off to Matt Parkinson for the third. Dr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Board members, these are suggested changes by Niola to our bylaws. Most of them are pretty small in nature, but I'll go through them real quick. And if you have any questions from now until the September board meeting, please let me know. Bylaw 0142 is in response to House Bill 1005. It replaces the state superintendent with the Secretary of Education language. It also expands language on who is eligible to serve as a school board member. 0142.1 adds more clarity to the term limits. It also adds the term elected to the language. 0142.2, this is revised to include statutory language and guidance for the oath of members. It adds the word "school" to board members, and it provides flexibility to the governing body to provide additional provisions to the oath as appropriate for the office. 0142.3, this is a revision to include language regarding felony convictions and to update citations to the Indiana Code. It adds "and" an appointment of board members, and it automatically includes felony convictions rather than it being an option. So the previous bylaw, the board could have selected felony convictions as a reason not to be eligible for the board. The new law does not make that an option anymore. It's an automatic, if there is a felony conviction, they're not eligible. 0144.1, revised to provide information about stipulated per diem amounts per board members, adds the word "school" to board members, changes the word "will" to "shall," but everything else there remains the same. 0144.2, revised to include board member ethics related to students, and you'll see that also in Brian's revisions tonight. It provides additional information, language related to the ethical relationship between a school board member and a student, all things that you would expect to see in there. And then 0164.5, this is revised to include language regarding And then 0164.5, this is revised to include language regarding felony convictions and to update citations. That one sounds repeat, maybe that's, let me double check that one real quick. I think 1645 is related to electronic means of communication, so I apologize, board, that summary, let me go back to the... Yeah, so I apologize, I have the wrong update on there. I'll get you the new update. This one essentially is a policy that's already going to follow our practice. This allows a board member to participate electronically. If you remember, when that law became applicable, we had put in a new bylaw. So we will have two bylaws that have some complementary language. This one adds a little bit more context to that, and I'll provide that update for you. Mr. Dorsey, those are the bylaw provisions.
The next provisions will be explained by Brian Simpkins.
President Dorsey, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, I have a number of policies for discussion this evening. Fortunately, they're pretty much grouped into bunches. The first ones up are 1213.01, 3213.01, and 4213.01 regarding staff-student relations. These new policies are intended to specifically address student, staff-student relations that may constitute criminal conduct, child abuse or neglect, inappropriate boundary invasions or conduct unbecoming a professional staff member, and have been updated to include child seduction as a conduct that may constitute a crime according to the Indiana Code. And so I must say, too, that also included is quite an extensive list of examples of inappropriate boundary invasions and some of those conduct pieces, and we thought that was important to include. Moving on to nursing mothers, that's policy 1425 and 3425 for administrators and teachers or professional staff. And then, not too long ago, we had already passed one for support staff, but this is an update with some additional language. And primarily, what that involves is the Providing Urgent Maternal Protections for Nursing Mothers Act, or PUMP Act, very clever acronym, and the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act have taken effect. And so this policy will cover all public school employees and most school employees. An employee can express breast milk during regularly scheduled breaks for up to one year following the birth of a child. So as is customary, we've always been sure when we work with mothers that we always provide a private, safe, clean place to do that, and we just work it out in terms of a schedule. And these policies are now in place to provide further guidance. Next up is tobacco use prevention. And again, those are common language for both administrators, professional staff, and support staff. There's also policy 7434 that is labeled "use of tobacco on school property," which is essentially word-for-word the same policy applied to visitors to our campuses. And so these policies are updates with new language, and these policies have been revised to reflect the recommendations of the Indiana Department of Health Tobacco Prevention and Cessation Team. The policy commits the superintendent to developing guidelines to ensure the school curriculum includes information regarding the health hazards inherent in the use of tobacco products and a communication plan to inform the public about the prohibitions set forth in those policies. And again, 7434 applies the same concept to visitors on school property. Finally, we get to policies 1521, 3121, and 4121, again, for administrators, professional staff, support staff, regarding personal background checks, references, and mandatory reporting. This, again, is involving updated language and updated requirements. Essentially, these policies have been revised to reflect the changes made by Senate Enrolled Act 115 to the Indiana Code, which prohibits school district from continuing the employment of contracting with or continuing to contract with a person who's been convicted of an offense, requiring license revocation unless the conviction has been reversed, vacated, or set aside on appeal. It also reflects the changes made in SEA 115, which adds the offenses of public indecency to the list of offenses which may be considered as grounds to not employ or not contract with, or to terminate the employment of or contract with an individual. It also reflects changes made, again, by Senate Enrolled Act 115 to the Indiana Code regarding the offense for which the Department of Education shall permanently revoke the license of a teacher. Also, and this was revelatory for us in HR, the policy also stipulates per Senate Bill 342 that the board can approve for hire an employee convicted of certain offenses under Indiana Code 20-26511.2C if the board approves of the employment via a separate special agenda item. If you have any questions, I can either answer those now or certainly communicate to me sometime in the next month before they become action items. I'll be happy to address any questions or concerns.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
The next revisions are with, will be presented by Matt Parkinson.
Good evening again, everybody. I have three policy revisions for the board's consideration. We're going to ask for your approval on these at the September board meeting. The first is for policy 6250. Policy 6250 deals with required ADM counts. We're using Niola recommended changes here. It's revising places where the words "shall," and, excuse me, where the words "will" and "must" are used, replacing those with the word "shall." And then there's one spot in this policy that refers to a September count date. State law changed in this past legislative session. Count date will now be on October 1st, so we're reflecting that language in this policy as well. The second policy that I have for the board's consideration is policy 6320. 6320 deals with procurement specifically on non-federal purchases, so these largely are purchases outside of grant funding. In the same way, the legislature changed the way that procurement laws are set up this past cycle. The current law, the law through June 30th, required that school districts take bids on any purchases that we expect to be over $150,000. And we can make purchases between $50,000 and $150,000 through quotes. The General Assembly modified those thresholds so that it's now $50,000 to $300,000, serving as the quote range, and then above $300,000, serving as the bid range. So we're asking for the board's approval to modify our policy language to line up with new Indiana Code. In the same way, we have language in this policy that appears to be a relic of something from the past. There's language in the policy that states there's a $150 limit before we can go, before the school board was authorized, the purchasing agent, which is me, to make purchases on the school district's behalf. In practice, that's not what we do. When we have a purchase that's up to the quote threshold, we make those purchases. Of course, the board still approves the payments. So we're asking for the board's approval to line up this language with the quote threshold, which is in practice how we've been carrying out our business. And then finally, policy 6550. Again, this is Niola recommended language, deals with travel payments and reimbursement, relocation costs. So this policy adds language in, saying that the board authorizes travel reimbursement for flights specifically, in the means that's most economical within reasonable travel hours for employees. In practice, if we have an employee that wants to do something different, that wants an upgrade, we allow it, and the employee pays the difference between that economical cost and what they choose to upgrade to. And then finally, we were given the option to either recommend the board authorize relocation costs or not authorize relocation costs, and we're recommending the board does not authorize relocation costs. Be happy to answer any questions, and in the same way as Brian and Dr. Hanson mentioned, also happy to answer any questions before the September board meeting.
Anybody got any comments, questions? Good, okay. All right. Hey, thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is, of course, closing comments, and we'll start, see, where did we finish up last time? We'll start on this end here, okay?
I second that, and then thank you for all your participation in caring for our children, and because that's what we're here to do, is to uplift, raise, educate, enlighten, teach the children we have.
Thanks, Chip. Julie?
I have had the opportunity to see a couple of our employees in social situations over the last couple of months. Prior to our last board meeting, I got to see Logan at a wedding of my friend's children, and he happened to know all the secrets about these people, and he was sworn to secrecy. So it was nice. And then today, and that actually, that was the celebration of a marriage, and two young people getting together and taking off their life. They actually had known each other for a very long time, and in fact, in Mrs. Bucky's second grade class, they were the Oz, they were Oz and Dorothy. And they've known each other that long, and they got married, and it was like a big reunion. It was a Lowell reunion, and it was a lot of fun. Today, though, I had the other end of that spectrum. I went to a funeral for a very wonderful lady, and I saw Kate there. She, I knew she was Mary Jane's, a relative of Mary Jane's, I believe, a cousin, because Mary Jane has all these thousands and thousands of cousins. But the point is, seeing people at two different, it's odd seeing people from work there, but just remember to spend time with your families, because life's short, and you want to make sure you work hard, but make sure you give yourself plenty of time to be with your family as well.
Thank you, Julie. LaShawna?
Thank you, President Dorsey. I echo what Mr. Kevin said about the support and what you all are doing for our youth and our families. I do want to give a brief update from WAVE. WAVE has continued to support Warren, back-to-school events, student liaisons we have on the committee. And Dr. Hanson touched on the August teacher grants, and I just wanted to note that WAVE gave out 44 grants totaling $16,000 back into our community. And one last update, we are having a, I guess as Mr. Marcus has said, joy is going to be our theme for this school year, and WAVE, along with MCRCC, is doing a joy-community engagement celebration. So we are inviting all of the teachers, custodians, staff, and support staff. You should be receiving emails if you have not already received those.
I think, is that the same as our cube?
Well, it is, but it's later in the day, so you can still, that's what I was going to say, board members, I know we'll be at Cube, but Cube ends like at 1:00, and this doesn't start until doors open at 7:30. So it may be a little stretch, and we may be extending ourselves a little bit, but please come out and help celebrate joy in a different format with our, really pushing for our support staff to come out and really love on them and show them the joy that we have in Warren. So continue to do what you do, and I appreciate each and every one of you. Have a blessed night.
Good. Thank you, LaShawna. Terry?
Just want to say I echo Kevin and LaShawna's well wishes and everything. Thank you for a wonderful opening day. It was wonderful seeing all the staff and everyone there. I really enjoyed the speaker, and I want to just say, a couple of years ago, when Rachel was president, she said something about grace, have grace this year. And so as a teacher, I took that and put a magnet on my bulletin board by my desk, and then this year, I took joy, and so now I have grace and joy. So thank you for everything and the inspiration.
Thanks, Terry. Rachel?
I also really truly enjoyed opening day. It's always a good day for the community as a whole, our teaching community and employee community, actually. And then when I attended the new teacher luncheon, I got to sit at the Lakeside table, and I attended Lakeside for a year, so that was a good time. We discussed construction projects during lunch, because that's what you do. In, at the end of July, I had my last meeting as the chair of Jane Polly Community Health Center. I got board limited, I got term limited off the board for a year, but that was a great nine years, and I'm still doing some work with them, which is always good. And then on the lighter note, my family did what we do every August, and we attended Gen Con, which is just an excellent, again, I'm going to give my plug for next year. It is an absolutely amazing weekend with game and fun, and we played board games for at least 12 hours straight for four days in a row, and we're all still talking to each other, which is really, really, because you know me, we're all hyper competitive. But it's just, it's a really good time to relax, bond as a family, and play some games. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Did you dress up in a costume or anything, or?
I did not, but other members of our group did.
Oh, great, great. That's a great thing. I, before we close, I just wanted to say that something that you don't know, may not know, and it's in reference to Shirley's library, if you will. She probably put in more work in that library than I, than I think she should. You know, since the library's been open, she's gotten so many volunteers bringing books, and that's what's needed in that library, because what she does is, and a lot of you probably don't realize this, but when a kid comes in there to the MCRCC and goes through the library and likes the book they see, they get to keep the book. So there's no, you know, you gotta, you know, it's got to sustain that. When a kid takes a book away, book away, not bringing that book back. But she's gotten so much support in the number of books that they've brought in there that they've, that's not a problem right now. And then plus, all the folks that have also raised their hands and said, hey, call on me to volunteer in the library, and I will be there. So it was really heartwarming and something else to see. So maybe she'll get a little bit of time off, but being retired, I think that's just a word. She's been working very hard in that thing, and I really, we all really, really appreciate that, and I'm very proud of her for that. Having said that... Oh, yes, go ahead.
Shirley, I just want to say thank you, because when we attended your opening day at the community center, my little granddaughter was there, you know, she just turned two, and you let her have one of those books, and it's called "Dada," and it has one word on each page, "Dada," and then the cow says "Moo," "Dada," and the duck says "Quack." She loved that book, and she's actually reading that book. I was like, wow, you're two, "Dada, moo, dada," so it is awesome. So I just want to thank you for that.
And with that, meeting adjourned.